Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're happy to have all of you here with us on this afternoon. Let us bow our heads, please. Eternal God our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for all that you are to us. And continue to bless our council and give us directions as to how to lead our city. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
We're happy to have Mr. Johnny out here with us, our former city manager. All right, we want to, we have a public hearing on today. And we want to ask those that's going to speak, please be three minutes. We have a clock running and it's three minutes. If you would like to speak, you may come to the podium, state your name and your address for the records, please. If not, we have, we have one more public here. Item number two, consideration of an ordinance to adopt the budget for operations for Department of Public Utilities in the city of Orangeburg for the fiscal year October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025. Adopt and amended electric rates effective October 1, 2024, and adopt and amend water rates effective October 1, 2024, and adopt and amended water waste rates effective October 1st. If, if anyone would like to speak on item number two, would you come and state your name and your address for the records, please? And you have three minutes. If not, we're gonna move on. All right, item number three, consideration of August 20th, 2024 city council minutes.
Move the passage.
Motion been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kidd, all in favor?
Aye.
As have the motion is carried. Before we move on, Dr. Clu will not be here. He's in Paris. His daughter won something with the Olympics. And so he's there celebrating with his daughter. So we want to continue to pray for him to safe travel there and back. Thank you. Item number four, consideration of June 27th and June 28th, 2024, DPU budget workshop minutes.
Move the passage.
And motion been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knott, all in favor?
Aye.
As have the motion is carried. The recognition of September community of character trait is self-awareness. And self-awareness is the curiosity knowledge, curious knowledge of one's own character, feeling, and motives, and desire. And we're gonna ask our community if you would please adopt this self-awareness character so we can demonstrate it for the month of September. Thank you. Our old business, item number five, Mr. Everett is coming for that, the old business.
Good afternoon, council, mayor.
Good afternoon, mayor.
Item number five for your consideration is third reading of an ordinance amending the budget for the city of Orangeburg for the fiscal year October 1, 2023 through September 30th, 2024. As you all know, this is the annual budget amendment that we are bringing before you. The current budget for this fiscal year is $24 million, 37,012. We're asking that it be amended to the amount of $29 million, 53,962. The, the primary difference there being is the receipt and expenditure of grant funds. So grant funds for the new city hall, the Gateway Project, D Y B. And there, we're also asking that 2 million, 2 to 2 and a half million dollars in the reserves be expended as well. And that is primarily because of a grant that we did not receive, or that we are actually not going to accept, COPS grant, that would be used for DPS, but we're at the position now where we don't think that would be prudent to, to accept that grant. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Everett before we read the ordinance? Okay, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina for the fiscal year ending October 1, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024. Need a motion for passage.
Mayor and council, remove the adoption of the ordinance amending the budget for the city of Orangeburg for the fiscal year October 1, 2023 through September 30th, 2024.
Motion been made by Councilman Kidd.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have the motion is carried. Item number six.
Thank you, mayor and council. Item number six for your consideration is third reading of an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt a budget for the city of Orangeburg for the fiscal year October 1, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. There's one item that I wanted to point out for that changed from what was originally proposed. We originally proposed 26 million, 914,205 budget. That is, we subsequently changing that to 29 million, 560,812. And the, the reason being is that because previously we had not included the expenditures and receipt of, of grant funds. We have, for example, a FEMA grant of 479,100. The state museum grant that goes to the Civil Rights Museum, but it comes through the city of 707,000, a DPS grant that, that you all are familiar with for the replacement of, of the law enforcement complex roof of 193,000. And so we included all of those grants in this final budget proposal of 29 million, 560,812. Just some highlights that we've included, some updated master fee schedule in the budget. As a reminder, we're requesting that residential sanitation rates be increased from a fee of, current fee of 17 to 20. We've also requesting that some fees, for example, fingerprints be raised from 5 to 10. That the opening and closing of, of graves for our cemeteries be raised from 420 just the current rate to, to 500. Other items that I wanted to bring to your attention, our insurance for, that we're requesting for this year, medical and health insurance is 2 million, 127,600. That's a small decrease from, I'm sorry, that was this past year. The increase is to 2 million, 210,900. We are still, we should be receiving bids for workers' comp, property, tort, and auto insurance on this Friday. RFP is supposed to be closed on this Friday. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions on item number six for Mr. Everett? Any questions, item number six?
No questions, but would you email us the outline?
Yes, ma'am, you, you should have.
I know it's here, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, certainly you can email it. And, and just as a reminder, again, we're, we're not requesting or asking for any property tax increases.
Say that real loud.
We're not requesting.
We're not requesting any increase for property taxes. Y'all get that on all social medias. We are also not requesting any, any pay to the employees for the insurance, right? Any, any costs for the, to the employees?
No, no.
An insurance, so be, make sure we clear on things.
We, we have no cost of living, right? There's no way to work that out?
It's, it's always up to you all, but we're not, we're not requesting that this year. Remember, we're, we're, we're trying to be as conservative as possible given the, the fiscal constraints that we find ourselves in.
The Zulu rate was supposed to be raised, raised last year, wasn't it, from 17 to 20?
Yes, that was.
Yeah, it was.
Putting up a year.
Yes, sir.
Any, any, any more concerns, council? If not, I'm gonna read the ordinance. An ordinance approving the budget for the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025. We need a motion.
Mayor and council, I move the adoption of the ordinance approving the budget for the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kidd.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have the motion is carried. Thank you. Matters pertaining to the Department of Public Utilities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public as well. You have before you second reading of an ordinance to adopt budget for the operations of the Department of Public Utilities. Before we get through to the adoption of this ordinance, I do want to brief you on a couple of things. If council recalls on our last meeting, you amended this ordinance to do away with the first or initial proposed option, which was option two. And you have now moved to option one. Just as a reminder, option one only involves a rate increase on the water and wastewater divisions. So there, there's, there will be no rate increase included on gas and electric. It will only have a rate increase, this budget only has a rate increase for the water and wastewater portions of our operations that, that will generate revenue of 2.9 million. And if you recall, we've been planning for this over the last several years. Council has done this in an alternating year process. As we have embarked on a pretty aggressive capital program, this has continued to allow us to do that. So just a reminder, you have now adopted, amended this budget with option one. Furthermore, option one will increase our operating income from, by 5.5 million, from 124 to 129 million. Also, our operating expenses, again, will stay the same as the prior budget projected, prior, before the amendment, projected 3.7 million or 3.5% increase from 109 to 109 million to 112.9 million. The, some of the key drivers are 2.4 million dollar increase that's directly related to our cost of purchased power and, and gas. So that's a direct pass-through again to the customers as well. Also, included in that number, we have, we're projecting a 2.5% increase in system repairs, also a total of 100,000 due to state mandated increases with retirement. And then also, we continue our funding of our merit program, our performance merit program through, through the DPU. Also, we continue to meet the transfer needs of the city at 6.1 million. Again, that is held from the last year as well. We do anticipate with this, an, an extra drawdown of cash of about 13 million. That will put us, and we projected this as well, put us just shy of our, our minimum, minimum requirement reserve of 41 million will be at 31 million projected at the end of the year. As always, we will do our best to manage that, to hopefully reduce that number as best we can. But that is what we project at this point. Our, our capital investment, the largest two areas, we project water to spend in, in many of these projects, are multi-year projects, but the next year, 34.2 million. And then electric at 12.4 million. Those are, are projects that council, we talked in great deal, at great length, about in the, in the budget workshops as well. I do want to point out that in this budget, we have, we've amended. I know I had a question earlier as to why do we still have electric amendment, amendment to the electric rate? That's because this proposed ordinance eliminates the electric rate code 2J. We have no customers on that rate, and it would take some effort to update it. And it's not really worth it at this point because we don't have any customers that would qualify for it. So we're gonna eliminate that rate at this point. And so we have, we've had that included from the initial budget, so there's no need to do an amendment on that. Also, we will add two rates. One rate that's, that will need an amendment tonight is the addition of the wastewater rate code 5V. It's a multi-unit dwelling rate. This rate does not impact anybody. There's no one on it at the moment. It is in an effort to match the system rates, DPU system rates, with the rates of the Edisto, west of the Edisto system that we maintain and operate for the county. And so we have matching rates on each side so that we can make clear one pool's rate is being billed and we can rightly invoice that, or be invoiced by that to the county and, and remit their funding as appropriately collected. So that rate would be on the west of the Edisto system that, that we maintain and manage for the county. And, and at some point will become our own as well, if council remember those discussions. Again, nobody's impacted by that rate. It is the same rate that we have on our DPU-owned system. The third one is the addition of an electric rate code 2K. This rate impacts electric vehicle charging stations. Currently, we have two electric vehicle charging stations. And they are currently on a 2E rate. And we want to move them to a, a rate that is more appropriate for the, the type of operation that they are. That way, we are appropriately billing them or, or collecting the impact that they have on the system. And, and, and not having to spread that cost to the other customers on the system. And so because we've never had charging stations, we only have two, we, we wanted to get this rate updated, included on our system. And so that's what this does. It does not have a real impact on cost at this point for the customer. Long-term, it, it could, but it would not necessarily based on their current usage. And, and again, to dig a little deeper, we want to make sure that we are collecting appropriately. These charging stations require much larger transformers. They're more like a commercial or a small industrial, large commercial, small industrial transformer, which cost us more. And so we want to make sure we're collecting from them the appropriate amount to, to cover those costs and the investments that we make. They also impact the system differently because they may have some idle time and then they spike, which also impacts our, our system and the cost to us as well. So again, we, we don't want to be in a situation where we, situation where we have this growth of these charging stations and we're passing that, that cost on to the customers who are not using those. That, any questions on that? Any deeper than that, I'm gonna have to call Wade up here and let him help me out. So I'll stop right there, I gave you a lot. Let me recap real quick. The one amendment that we need tonight is an amendment to add code 5V multi-unit dwellings to this ordinance. So that would be a needed amendment. Everything else is already in there and that was in there from the first reading, and we're just continuing that forward. There's no rate increase for electric and gas. It only impacts, the rate increase only impacts the water and wastewater system. I can give you the details again on what those costs would be, if you want them, but.
Go ahead and give me for the record.
Okay, just for the record, for option one, which we have proposed for you tonight, inside the city rate increase would be a 2.3% increase on the average bill and a total dollar amount of 6 dollars and 13 cents. And then on option one for outside the city residents, it's a 4.1% increase or 12 dollars and 26 cents. So that is the impact of, of the rate increase.
Now, we need, before we, do anybody have any questions before we vote to amend, amend the budget?
Yeah, just, just let me throw this out. Say, if we don't go with the option one, two years, what will happen?
So if, if we, if we didn't raise, if we didn't approve option one, we would need to make some adjustments in our capital plan moving forward, simply put. We would put a hold on some projects and slow some things down. If we did not include, did not approve the current plan before you.
And would that affect the anticipated drawdown as well?
Yes, but I, I would do my best to shelve some projects, mothball some things. We, we just wouldn't do some projects going forward, simply put.
Our, our decisions to help them was based on the fact that they have, DPU has been going forward and keeping things current. You know, when they first, when I first became the mayor, they were working on a lot of projects and, and at the sub-stations and all of that. They keep, they, and keeping lights so that if they went out, they wouldn't be out a long time like they used to be. And, and then working with this wastewater and water, they, they trying to keep good drinking water and good, and then keeping things in line. And we have to, we have to thank for, I mean, it's been my causes, but this is something that we put in our body. We drank the water, and they have, they have, they have had a lot of projects. And they have been so successful in those projects, Warren. And I just want you to know, we appreciate that.
We, we've done more in the last five years than, than, than I think we've ever done as a collective. We may have had large projects in one of the, but everybody's doing significant work to, to update and reinvest in our system. And again, I remind council, we have what is considered a large utility, probably the second largest in the state with respect to a electric utility owned by municipal government. And we, we don't want to lose control of our systems. And I put S on that because we have pretty significant investment in all four divisions that, that if we don't keep up with that maintenance, it becomes problematic to manage going forward.
And, and, and comparative to other municipalities that have electric companies, electric in, 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 we are, our rates have been very low. Our rates have been very low. And the citizens in Orangeburg, they want the best of everything. But sometime going forward, when you go forward in order to be current and, and have things up, you gotta pay a little bit more money, you know, to, to keep it going. I think DPU, they have been very, y'all have been very, y'all been managing pretty good. And, and I like all these projects that y'all putting out because y'all doing a very good job in trying to, I mean, the customers, they called us, really, to go wrong. We, we want them to call us for some good thing, not because their lights out and they can't go drink water. Because all over this, all over this city, wherever we are, people been, lights been coming back on, coming back on.
As, as we've stated and, and plotted, planned in, in our strategic plan, our goal is to invest in the safety, resilience, and, and, and be able to always be on, to always be on. And when we go out, to be back on as, as soon as possible. Ms. Knott asked me a question a couple of meetings ago, and I shied away from the answer a little bit about who, who pays. And, and really, if we don't make the right investments and we don't take care of our system, the customer always pays. They either pay in lower quality service or they, they pay in what we, we're not able to do for them. And so we, we gotta make sure that we can hold on to the system and so that our customers get the quality service that they deserve.
Can I say something? Part of the public is owned by the citizens of Orangeburg. And they are entitled, we are entitled, for the lowest rates in the state. And another thing is, I've been on council for about 15 years. And for 15 years, you've hired somebody to come in here and talk about rate increases. Is that right?
So, Mr. Strowman, you're correct, we did bring in.
Ever since 15 years, that's been going on.
Well, when I first got on board, we did evaluate where we were. We did an assessment of the capital needs. And we put in a plan to move us in that direction with investment. And remember, we had a multi-phase plan where we would do it by cash, rates, and bonds. And so we have, to, to this point, managed to keep pace with that. Council has been gracious enough to continue to move the rates incrementally, just a little bit at a time, to meet the needs of the system. And then we did a recent borrowing last year, or in, in this budget year, that has helped with that as well. And, and some other monies that's approved as well to, to borrow through the state SRF fund. And so we, we have done it in a multi-pronged way, but we, we hired those guys to help us craft a plan to get us, from a capital standpoint, reinvestment standpoint, to where we need to be. If you recall, we, we were, we were out a lot. I remember Mr. Odom coming in my office, lamenting over being out on, 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 on part of his system, I won't name it, but being out routinely. Wade having issues with, in the electric division with, with transformers that were dying on us. We, we have come a long way, and those investments are very expensive. It doesn't matter whether you live in Greenville or Orangeburg, the price is the price. And so we, we are unfortunate, you know, that we don't have the luxury to, to just continue to put those things off. We have to reinvest in our system and find a way to keep pace with the, the maintenance and the reinvestment that, that's required.
Mr. Strowman, you have any more questions?
Well, I, I, I just feel like that, some of that money should be spent to higher, lower rates and manage the company. I mean, I just don't think y'all will be bringing outside people into run our company. I mean, that's just my belief. I, I mean, I might be wrong, but. I, I mean, I might be wrong, but. For somebody to come in and try to tell you how to raise rates every year, that bothers me.
Well, again, they necessarily tell us how to raise rates. They have been working with us to craft a plan.
They are companies that can come in and tell you, you can do this or do that, and cut expenses.
And, and I did include in your packets, I don't, I didn't put them in this time, but I included the packet last time, where this option one would, would leave us. We, we were, to Mr. Strowman's point, the lowest of all of the systems that we surveyed. This moves us up above one, that is city of Rock Hill, and it's a pretty close margin, even in that. So we are still pretty, pretty low on the, on the, the, the cost to our citizens.
Warren, did you say this move was above Rock, Rock Hill?
So if you remember the, the sheet that I gave you last time, it was, city of Orangeburg and our existing rates put us at the lowest range, and Dorchester County being highest. And now this jumps us up to two sixty seven. Rock Hill is two sixty six on the average bill. So it jumps us up a dollar over them. And, and, like us, they're, they're also making pretty significant investments in their system as well.
Warren, I, I, for, for, for the public's sake, I, I want you to tell the public the advantage of us doing, doing number one to, to our customers. Sometime when people hear the advantage, they don't mind a little rate. You know, just give them the, like, the advantage of, you know, about our system, water and wastewater.
Right. Again, it, it is to help us continue to reinvest in the capital improvement of our system. That is pipes in the ground, the plants, so that, as you stated, Mayor, we can continue producing clean water from our water plant and also being able to treat water, wastewater at our wastewater plant before we put it back into the environment. All of those things, if they go wrong, they can be catastrophic in cost and in community resources. So, so that's as simple as I can put it. We are taking a prudent step in reinvesting in the DPU system. If we don't do that, there's, there's no doubt in my mind, something will go wrong. And I don't mean to be alarmist, but, but it will not be a pleasant experience if we can't continue to invest in our system. If we, we don't have the capital to do so, we, we will be doing a lot of, just hoping that things don't break and that, that's not the way, that's not a prudent way to run, run a system.
Thank you. We want to entertain a motion to.
You didn't read it.
I mean, no, I don't read. He got an amendment.
Yes, so, so if council is so inclined, please make an amendment to add wastewater rate code five V multi-unit dwellings.
Amendment to add. Y'all got, you got an amendment.
Wastewater rate code five D.
Five V as in Victor. V as in Victor.
Okay, at this time, we would like to entertain a motion to, to amend the budget before we read it.
Mayor and council, I move that we amend the ordinance to read wastewater code five V.
That's correct.
Yeah, to add wastewater code five V multi-unit dwelling.
Five V multi-unit dwellings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. All right, motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knott, all in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Abstained.
Abstained. Four, two. Okay. All right, now I'm gonna read the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Okay. An ordinance to adopt a budget for the operation of Department of Public Utilities of the city of Orangeburg, state of South Carolina, for the fiscal year October one, two thousand twenty four through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. Adopt amended electric rates effective October first, two thousand twenty four. Adopt amended water rates effective two thousand, it says October one, two thousand twenty four, and adopt amended water rates effective October one, two thousand twenty four. We would like to entertain a motion for this one.
Mayor and council, we move the adoption to adopt a budget for the operation of Department of Public Utilities for the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina, for the fiscal year October one, twen, two thousand twenty four through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. Adopt amended electric rates effective October one, two thousand twenty four. Adopt amended wastewater rates, not waste, now water rates, effective October one, two thousand twenty four, and adopt amended wastewater rates effective October one, two thousand twenty four.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knott, all in favor?
No.
Four, four, two. Motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is all I have for you tonight, if there are no other questions.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In our executive session tonight, the discussion on neg, neg, negotiation incident proposed by contractual arrangements, and the receipt of legal advice where legal advice relates to pending, threatening, or potential claim of other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement or legal claim for the position of the public agency in other adversary situation involving assertion against the agency of a claim, South Carolina Code, section thirty four seventy A, A two. Item B, poll attachment agreement. And item, item A, poll attachment agreement. And item B, strategic plan. And we would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we go in second session?
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor? Any opposed, eyes have. We're gonna say good night, and we don't know whether we gonna come back to open session or not, but if you'd like to wait, you can, thank you.